Okay. Good evening, everyone. Before we get started, if I'd like to ask Sarah LaDart to lead us in invocation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you'll please pray with me. Dear Lord, we thank you for our health care workers and volunteers and want to share our appreciation for all the American Red Cross has done for our country and around the world for 140 years. Tonight, we pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council and the agenda set before them. Please grant them confidence in their knowledge of what would please you and what would benefit those who choose to make Milton their home. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sarah. Yeah, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, March 1st, 2021, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you have wish to speak on any item on the agenda, then please bring your comment card to the city clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow the speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls that agenda item, once the agenda item is called, then no more comment cards will be accepted. So will our city clerk please call roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the March 1st, 2021, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morg.
Here.
And Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. We appreciate you being here. And Tammy, if you will please sound the next item. Approval of the agenda.
Thank you. That next item is approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 21053.
Okay. I'd like to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition, potential litigation, and personnel. And I'd also like to move the new business item, the new business agenda item, number 21-062, after reading of the consent agenda. Are there any other agenda changes? Not hearing none, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the meeting agenda as just modified by you.
Second. Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, I believe a second from Councilmember Moore, a third from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Next item is public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight?
I don't have any general public comments.
So then we'll move on to the consent agenda. If, Tammy, please read those items.
That first item is approval of an agreement between the City of Milton and American Alarm Corporation, Inc., for alarm monitoring services at the Milton Public Safety Complex, Police Station and Municipal Court, and Fire Station Number 44, Building A, Agenda Item Number 21054. Our next item is approval of a task order with Pond and Company to provide engineering design services and construction administration for the Morris Road widening, Agenda Item Number 21055. Our third item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and JQ AV Techs for the configuration and operation of the city's AV equipment during city meetings, Agenda Item Number 21056. Our fourth item, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and CHA Consulting, Inc., for Cogburn Road Sidewalk Design Modifications, Agenda Item Number 21057. Our fifth item, approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Athletic Association Facility Use Agreement between the City of Milton and Eagle Sticks Rec, Inc., to provide youth girls lacrosse programming, Agenda Item Number 21058. Our sixth and final consent item is approval of an outside providers facility use agreement between the City of Milton and Wellsong LLC to provide adult Tai Chi classes, Agenda Item Number 21059.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. If our city clerk could please sound the new business item that we moved to right after the consent agenda.
That new business item is consideration of a resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Green Space Advisory Committee, Agenda Item Number 21062.
Okay. The ordinance that created the Milton Green Space Advisory Committee specified that unlike our other committees, the members would be approved as a slate, but serve staggered terms and could be reappointed for an unlimited number of terms. The three members being considered for reappointment tonight have terms which have expired. So I'm going to ask if we have a motion and a second for the approval of a resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Green Space Advisory Committee, and that would be Mr. Robin Frickton here, Colt Woodall, and Steve Wheeler. So do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make motion that we approve the resolution reappointing members of the City of Milton Green Space Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Moore, a second from Councilmember Jameson. I believe, are we going to swear them in now, or do we need to do that?
We are. We're going to swear. There are going to be two here and then one on Zoom.
And then Steve is on Zoom, correct.
Yes.
Okay. So I will, if Robin and Colt will step forward, and then Stacy, you're working with, do we not vote on it?
You did motion and a second.
Oh, my bad. So before we do it, you guys hold on one second. So I had a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. Sorry.
Stacy, you're checking with the...
Steve is online right now.
I don't know that I've ever done a...
Yeah.
If you'll make sure you speak into the microphone so he can hear you and repeat what you say.
Okay.
Great.
Come on up six feet apart. Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Colt. Thank you, guys, for all the hard work you've done. I want to say this for the entire committee, but, and these three members that are getting sworn in tonight, this is, you know, obviously a very important thing, and our citizens are very, very appreciative of the results of what you guys have been instrumental in helping us do, so. So if you guys could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm...
I do solemnly swear and confirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties...
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Milton Green Space Advisory Committee...
Of the Milton Green Space Advisory Committee.
Of the city...
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof...
I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
All right. And again, I do thank you, guys. And then Tammy, we will sign these two, have Robin and Colt.
Get the flower. Robin, go ahead.
Counsel wants to, we'll get around up here, and then we'll get Robin and Colt to stand up here if you can direct them to.
Thank you.
There. Over here. You look better, Colt. You look better than that. You know, one thing I do want to say, add to talking about the job and the efforts and volunteerism you guys have done on this subject is, the neat thing about this, this is something that people are excited about now, supportive and enjoying, but 20, 30, 40 years, 50 years from now, when we're not here, people are going to go, wow, I'm really, you know, this is awesome that they did that. All right. Thanks.
Thanks.
Tammy, if we'll move on to reports and presentations, if you'll please read the next item.
That first item is proclamation recognizing the American Red Cross of Georgia, Agenda Item Number 21060. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. As, I am proud to present this proclamation for the American Red Cross Month 2021. Whereas, March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in Fulton County, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. And whereas, during the trying times of the coronavirus pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need, whether it's in responding to this year's record-breaking disasters across the country, or rolling up their sleeves to give blood when our country faced a severe blood shortage. And whereas, in Fulton County, local families have relied on Greater Atlanta Red Cross volunteers for comfort and hope while coping with home fires, the critical need for blood donations, and other emergency needs. And whereas, last year, Greater Atlanta volunteers in Fulton County alone assisted 1,294 residents after home fires with urgent needs like food, lodging, and recovery support more than any other county in Georgia. They also deployed to disasters such as tornadoes in Georgia in the spring of 2021 and other disasters across our nation. And whereas, the American Red Cross with 676 volunteers in Fulton County has supported local families in other ways too. Last year in Fulton County, the Red Cross performed 1,740 acts of assistance to our members of the military and their families, and conducted 6,260 training sessions in first aid, CPR, and other life-giving skills. Most hospitals in Fulton County administer blood collected by the Red Cross, and Fulton County residents made 52,938 blood donations through the Red Cross. And whereas, this lifesaving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. Nearly 200 years since the birth of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance her noble legacy, and we ask others to join in their commitment to care for people in need. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton, hereby recognize and proclaim March 2021 as Red Cross Month. Further, we encourage all Americans to reach out and support its humanitarian mission, and this is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on the first day of March 2021, so.
And Mayor, we have Ms. Jessica Gebhardt here.
I think Jessica is here, right? If you please come forward, we appreciate you being here.
Let's pull that mic... Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jessica Gebhardt, and I'm a Red Cross Community Volunteer Leader for North Fulton County. On behalf of the tens of thousands of Georgians who benefit from Red Cross services each year, thank you for recognizing March as Red Cross Month in the City of Milton. In fact, last year in Fulton County and across Georgia, more than 14,000 people turned to the Red Cross for help with emergency food, clothing, temporary shelter, health services, and emotional support following local disasters, most of which were home fires. It's been a tough year for everyone, but despite the pandemic, more than 70,000 people became new Red Cross volunteers in 2020, including myself and many Milton residents. This is the humanitarian spirit we honor during Red Cross Month. Thank you for helping us recognize all those who make our lifesaving mission possible as volunteers, blood donors, financial supporters, and community partners. We invite everyone to join us for Red Cross Giving Day on March 24th and unite with thousands of people to help families in need. You can donate, volunteer, or give blood to help. You can also learn lifesaving skills like first aid and CPR to make your community safer. Visit redcross.org today to learn more, or join us for a virtual volunteer open house on March 3rd. Happy Red Cross Month, and thank you for your time.
Okay. If our city clerk will please sound the final report and presentation item tonight.
That final item is presentation for pet waste stations in the Deerfield Parkway Corridor, Agenda Item Number 21061, Mr. Robert Drury.
Got a brief presentation. It's not real long, but I'm going to introduce to you a plan to put in some dog waste stations, also known as pet waste stations in the Deerfield Corridor. The objective of this PowerPoint presentation is obviously introduce the need for these pet waste stations, show you a little bit about what they look like. We've got a location plan and a service plan, and I'm going to outline the cost, and when I'm done, we can discuss, and I'll be looking for some guidance from City Council. Full disclosure, I am not a dog owner, so I want to make sure everybody understood that. No other objective here. We've identified an area we call the Deerfield Corridor. You're familiar with it. You drive it probably quite often. You also know that area is heavily used by pedestrians, and a lot of those pedestrians on any given day, you'll see walking their dogs. The location is bisected by Deerfield Parkway, and I don't know if my cursor shows up yet. And along the east is Morris Road, and along the west is Highway 9, and Webb Road goes right through the middle of it. Very heavily populated area, and as I mentioned, very heavily used by pedestrians throughout those neighborhoods. The area in yellow I identified is simply Morris Road, and I just put that in yellow because it is supposed to be widening, but we did include it in this, in this plan. We have a request from a frequent user out there to suggest putting in these pet waste stations, so we looked at locations, looked at how we can best do this, but I don't think there's any doubt there is a need out there for these pet waste stations.
I guess you don't really, we don't need to get into specifics, but I guess it's pretty easy to go around and identify if there's a need, isn't there?
It's not hard. Yeah. It's not hard. That's a typical pet waste station. It looks like the ones we've got out at Freedom Park in Birmingham and probably Bell. I didn't actually go look at Bell's Park, but that's what they look like. They're post-mounted, they're not in concrete, so they, they can be moved around. The bags are locked in, so people just can't necessarily steal them, but you've seen these bags, you know what, you know what they are. You've seen these stations. So this is the location plan that we've outlined. I consulted with two landscape architects and a city planner, and there's really no hard and fast rule on where to locate pet waste stations, so I, you know, kind of threw them out there. That's what identified in the, with the blue X's as the locations. I've got them at intersections, and I've tried to identify midpoints throughout most of these areas, where the best location would be around the subdivision entrances, but I came up with 13 stations as they're shown. Now, it's flexible, they can be moved around. But the plan is that these stations will be serviced by Triscapes, who is our current contractor for our parks and our road sides, and twice weekly, they'll be serviced, so there will be no opportunity for them to run out or full. And the cost in this table, the first column, I should say row, is a one-time cost to purchase and install 13 pet waste stations at $6,500. And then the servicing plan, again with Triscapes, would be a change order for the 13 stations, about $9,400 a year. We can fund this, this year to get it started, but I'm just going to remind you all that every year there will be a reoccurring fee to services at about $9,400. So that's the presentation, that's the location, and I'm open for any discussions or any questions you may have, and like I said, I'll be looking for some guidance.
Any questions or comments, Joe, and then Rick?
Make sure I understood that cost part, because my back of the napkin math seemed to point to the fact that each station was going to cost us about $100 a month.
I don't think I calculated per, yeah, $780 per month for 13 stations, so less than $100 per month. And that's servicing twice weekly, which is what they do at Freedom Park as well.
Okay. Rick?
I'm good with, in our parks having this type of amenity. I guess the question is, why are we doing along public roadways and why just here? Because if we do it here, then does this mean we should start doing this everywhere where people walk dogs?
The best way I can respond to that is, this has been an identified area where it's heavily used by pedestrians with their dogs. I can't say that they'll be put anywhere else at this point, but you do open that door up for, for other areas maybe requesting.
Yeah, I guess, because we have a lot of people that walk dogs in our area and along Bethany Bend, and I guess what I see it as, if it's in a park or trail area that the city owns, makes sense, include them. But along public areas, most people bring a bag along and they, they pick up the refuse. I know some people don't, but I'm just questioning, I guess, why are we going to spend taxpayer dollars to do this in public areas when people in fact could, could easily just bring their own bag and carry it back and take care of their dog versus the city having to pay for that in this area?
I will say, you do find these along the Big Creek Greenway and some of the trails that are around other communities, they do have these located along these trails. They're not residential communities, so they have a point to their walk, but you do find them along, typically along trails.
Right. And that's why I say, I have no issue with that. That may, to me, that makes sense. That's a, that's, will be our city-owned trails in different places, and that could be an amenity. I just question, do we want to spend taxpayer dollars? Even though it may not seem like much, do we want to spend dollars on something like this when, to me, it's responsible, responsibility of the pet owner to actually bring a bag and then bring it back and dispose of it yourself versus us having to service areas?
So this came in as a community request from over there, and we had some, we obviously wasn't, weren't clear from a staff perspective whether or not the council would be supportive of this, which is why it's before you today. The complaint they were having was, was, well, in addition to gifts being left behind, were people, they went on long walks with their dogs, and they had to walk around carrying the weighted down bag at that point. It could be a potential amenity for our, our community down there. It's, it's just a possibility. If they came back, when I asked, when I asked Robert to look into it, came back a little more expensive than I was expecting to keep those, those maintained, but as Robert stated, we already have them in some areas, including Freedom Park down there. It may make sense, it may not.
Anybody else? Laura?
Would there be flexibility? I mean, once we sign the contract, save for those numbers, what if we saw that they were not being utilized, or we needed to spread them out, or can we size that down and just trial it, just to see how this might be used? One thing that I'm worried about is the portability of them. I mean, it's a great feature, but, I mean, after the investment, it doesn't seem like, are they, are they secured in some form or fashion, bolted down, or?
The first question was, yes, there is some flexibility. We don't have to do with 13. If you want to go with something less, that's easily to be done. If we go with a full 13, not be utilized, they can be pulled up. We could store them for potential uses in other parks. They're not concreted down, they have some flexibility, but I'm not aware of them ever getting stolen, but they do have some portability to it.
Pete?
Yeah, I'll actually, I'll kind of say what Rick said, but I guess my, my one concern is, if we do it for them, why shouldn't we do it here in Crab Apple, or why shouldn't we do it in other places? Maybe it is something the city wants all over, but, yeah, just to point out one area, I think we're gonna, I think it's gonna snow, it's gonna snowball into probably more, it's just my guess.
It's also, it's the highest populated area, concentrated populated area of the city, which is, would be one reason why you could potentially start with it over there to see what kind of use you get out of it. It would, it would be a test to see whether or not we get real use, whether or not it's a true amenity.
I guess it's one of those things where I'm, maybe I'm asking council, or maybe this is for future, if this is a necessity that the city should be providing, then that's one thing, so I don't even know if that's something that, is this typical in most other cities? Do they have this in public right of ways and stuff?
They have them if they're identified as a trail or, or a trailway, or trailhead.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah. So to follow on to what Peyton was just saying, I could see, and it's, it's not funny that we're talking about this for so long, but I'm getting the giggles for some reason. It's okay to think about this when you think about the use of our trail system. So, so the City of Milton has a defined trail plan. For those roads and those areas that are certainly on the plan, it makes a lot of sense, because this just goes to us investing in and keeping the trails that we want to have in good condition. So, so it makes some sense there. The question I really have is, do we have any evidence or, can we demonstrate the fact that the availability of these stations props up conformity? In other words, people that don't carry bags today, are they going to be compelled to carry bags tomorrow? Are they going to be compelled to do the cleanup work that needs to be done in order to use these stations? I would argue that they may not. So we're going to be spending money for a problem that still is going to be a problem.
Paul?
Yeah, Joe, you took, you took some of my thoughts as well. I, I think that we're talking about a behavior change, where somebody has already consciously chosen not to carry a bag with them, probably. Does the introduction of those solution, the stations then change that behavior? I'd love to know if there's any evidence of that being the case. But I also support, I think it was Councilman Jameson who said, maybe we, we start on a smaller scale, that if, if we don't have to invest, there's no economy of scale in buying six versus 13, or seven versus 13. Maybe you start with half as many and see if that does change the behavior. Use your strategic plan like you've already identified, maybe just with half as many, and if we can demonstrate that it's an improvement, then by all means, we take the next step, rather than going full bore out of the box. rather than going full bore, out of the box, and then not experiencing a behavior change and recognizing that we've overspent.
Go ahead, Laura.
Carol, I've already spoke.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you. It's, in many areas, it's a needed amenity. I don't live in that area, but since our region and our city, not all areas are created equally in terms of sidewalks and places where dogs can go and people can walk their dogs. I mean, I think there are places that need additional help, because you can't just let your dog off-leash, or you can't wander 15 feet off the sidewalk to allow your dog to go to the bathroom. So I'm in favor in some sort of a trial. It really doesn't give me heartburn to do the full thing if, in fact, you think based on experience that that's what's needed, because candidly, our regions might create it equally. So if we have to say no at future times, we have to say no, but I don't think that we should say no now to people who have identified this as a need, just because of come what may, because other areas may not need it. So at least a trial, if not a full-blown yes from me.
Okay. Laura?
So, one possibility is that, I really like the idea of the trail. We have that green space over on Webb Road. If we were to try to section out, you know, some reason, reasonability to, you know, implementing it, which is, you know, the trail that goes, you know, winds around, maybe a loop or something, I don't know. The cost does concern me as well, with something that we're not sure exactly what we're trying to accomplish, or if it will be effective. It is a very dense area, and I see a lot of people walking their dogs, so I'm stuck in the middle on this and would like to dip my toe into it and see how it's working. And if we could identify, you know, if other cities are doing this on their trail system, let's see if we have a trail in that area, and then we could... That's where I'm comfortable.
You know, I was going to say, just a couple of observations, and one to, one I know Councilmember Moore said, but people learn in behavior. I'll say this, I have a big dog, and we live on a farm, and my wife and I always talk about, we can never move somewhere where we can't just let our dog out, we have to pick up its poop in a bag. But I will say this, if we're walking him and we happen to be somewhere and you see the bags in the facility, all of a sudden, you're like, oh yeah, I need to grab a bag and do it. So I think it actually would help people. To Carol's point, I see, you know, our areas are different in our city, different needs. To Steve's point, that, you know, is the highest population density there. To Rick's point, I totally understand, and some of the others, the heartburn of, you know, are we doing this for a select number of citizens or whatever? I almost look at it, we're not doing it for the pet owners, we're doing it for the other people that are walking, so they don't have pet owners' waste laying around there. So, that being said, you know, again, I hate to spend any money, but if, I would be in favor of doing a, I guess we'd call it a trial area, just because this would be our first one, but also think about, and maybe we can all think about, as in research, this may be a thing of the future, you know? Maybe one day, it's pretty, we need, you know, Milton's going to need Crab Apple and Deerfield and our trails and whatnot, and that may be the trend, because it, you know, it seems to be, you're seeing more and all that. So if that's the case, and we feel like it's eventually going to come, it may be worth trying, you know, doing this as a trial area.
Hey?
Quick question. Hey, Robert, can you pull up the map again on where they were going to be?
Step on my screen.
I was just curious, because I was kind of going back on the middle thing on this trial thing. We don't do the full 13, maybe we do seven or something, and find the best locations that are closer to trails, and then we can see if it's being used. How long's the contract for?
Pardon?
How long's the contract for?
How long is the contract?
Yeah, is it like a year long, or can we?
We have a multi-year contract with Triscapes.
It's just part of the contract.
Just part of the contract. If you add on, it's a change order.
But we could change the change order if we decide we don't want to go forward with it.
And to that point, I would say, and you probably don't know this answer, but if we wanted to use less, you know, if the number would come down substantially, you know, if it's half price for half the stations, we might want to try that, but it may not. You know, it may be three-quarters of the price for half the stations, because they just have to do more work, you know? There'll be a bigger mess at each one.
My thought was, the one-time purchases really aren't a huge deal, because we can use those, like you said, in other places.
Other places.
It's that recurring thing that I think could become a big-ticket item as it expands.
If I might add, just again, there's no hard, fast rule on where to put these things. I mean, certainly we can scale this down, however you see fit. And whether we want to just do one loop or just scatter them throughout, I'll leave that up to, obviously, leave it up to council's discretion, but...
Let me ask a question, and since Triscapes, you know, we have a contract with them and they work with us, would this be a compromise, maybe do half the loop, you know, check with them, see what the price might be? Possibly consider doing maybe half, and then reassessing it after 90 days or 120 days, and see if there's a big difference between one half and the other? I don't know if council would be interested in that, if it saves some money.
I'd be curious to see how much they're actually being used, too.
So is there any direction?
What's... I think you've captured it, Joe. I think a suggestion, maybe with a half start with identified control area versus a non-control area, so you can see if there's a difference. I think that's a great way to start, with the idea that if it's successful, we'll be happy to take the next step.
And I would, caveat, to first make sure, though, with the vendor, that, you know, that makes financial sense. If they're going to charge 80% to do half, no, but if they'll charge half to do half, certainly be a good consideration.
Obviously, I didn't ask the vendor how much less, but my guess is, it's a fixed price regardless, if we get 13 or five, because they're going to be out there anyway.
Okay. Well, I wonder if it's, but if it's only half the trail, you know?
Right.
We're talking about if it's only half. If you could just check on that, because that would, you know...
We will. We'll check it out.
You guys can get back with us on that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Robert?
Okay, tonight, we don't have any items under first presentation or public hearing, so if our clerk will please read the zoning rules and sound the first zoning agenda item.
At this meeting, council, consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezonings, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and tax amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all of those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The opposition will also be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present its position. If time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. The planning commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should have already been submitted to the community development department and is included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the planning commission meeting. A violation of relevant statute, state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the planning commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning agenda item this evening is consideration of RZ 21-01 slash VC 21-01 13085 Morris Road to rezone from T5 Limited Deerfield Form Base Code to AL Apartments Limited by WRPV 14 Deerfield Village Milton LLC to correct a legal non-conformity with regard to density of a multifamily project that was built in 2001. No changes to the existing development are proposed. Total of 554 units at a density of 18.43 units per acre on 30.05 acres and a two-part concurrent variance to allow existing tennis courts, fencing, and existing swimming. Swimming pool and fencing as shown on-site plan, Section 64 1602 V2 and Section 64 1609 B3. Agenda item number 21047. Zoning manager, Ms. Robin McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for letting us have this opportunity to explain this request. So this is a rezoning of an existing multifamily development off of Morris Road, and here is Webb Road here, and there's a little bit of an extension here for a second entrance. But that's the location of the existing development. And as the city clerk called out, this is a rezoning from T5 Limited to AL Apartment Limited, and it's existing 554 units on 30.45 acres at a density of 18.43 and the two-part concurrent variance that she called out, for the tennis courts and existing pools. Again, the applicant is represented tonight by their legal counsel, Carl Westmoreland. Again, this was originally zoned A, medium-density apartments, in 1997 under Fulton County, and this was part of a larger overall zoning of A apartment of 108 acres. The property was subdivided to be purchased, developed by different developers. Just as a side note, there was a private agreement to split the property between these two owners, but even though that was a density agreement, that wasn't going to be sufficient for what was needed to be able to recognize this new density. The complex, again, was constructed in 2001 on the 30-plus or minus acres, which was part of the above-mentioned zoning. And the purpose of this rezoning is to correct a legal non-conformity for density. And so this is just a slide that'll show you, the red is the parcel, the 30-acre parcel, the original zoning encompassed this whole area here, as well as a lot of this floodplain here. This green is floodplain, so that was the 100-plus acres that was part of the original zoning. So in our Form Base Code, this is a map depicting the future land use. The future land use is T5 Limited, we don't have a different designation, it's just a Form Base Code areas, it's whatever the zoning district is, is the future land use. Just a little explanation, we did something similar about five years ago. Mr. Westmoreland also represented a different property owner off of Deerfield Parkway, and the reasoning why it's going not back to A medium-density apartments is that that A district, apartment district, only allows up to 12 units per acre. And once this was split off of the 100 acres, and if you do the math, it comes out to be the higher 18 units per acre, and therefore, the reasoning to be legal to make it requesting AL Apartment Limited, which is, allows for unlimited density per se, so above 12 units, is what would be appropriate under AL, which is what the applicant is requesting, to fix the non-conformity of density. So based on the current zoning of T5, it was determined by the city attorney that if more than 60% of each structure is destroyed, it could not be rebuilt to the current configuration. So this is another reason for this rezoning, and thus, the applicant's request to AL, to meet the lender's requirement to service the loan. Also, the applicant has agreed that if the complex would be redeveloped in the future, it will be required to be developed under the T5 Limited Development Standards. So what that means is, not just if one building is destroyed by, you know, a tornado or a tree hitting it, it's like if they take the whole 30-plus acres and want to totally demolish it and redevelop it, they would be required to conform to our Form Base Code standards of T5 Limited. Again, this is the existing conditions of the property, where it has entrance off of Morris, as well as the Webb Road extension, and it actually goes out a little bit further into 400 right there. So just to review quickly, CZIM, nobody came, whether in person or via Zoom. The design review board, technically, this item does not have, the DRB does not have jurisdiction over rezonings review for the Form Base Code area, so therefore, it was not presented to them. The public participation, the applicant did hold their required meeting on January 7th. Again, nobody came to the meeting location or via Zoom. And lastly, the planning commission was held on January 27th of this year and was approved, they recommended approval, both the rezoning and the two-part concurrent variance unanimously. The site plan for the apartment meets the development standards required by the zoning district of AL. There is a need for a two-part concurrent variance that will be discussed for other development standards, and that is, we have requirements for pools and tennis courts to be a certain distance from different property lines and et cetera. So staff is recommending approval for both of those items, to allow the existing tennis courts and fencing to be shown on the site plan, as well as existing swimming pools and fencing to remain. And if approved with the recommended conditions, and based on the fact that the multifamily development currently exists, staff recommends approval conditional of RZ 2101 and the two-part concurrent variance VC 2101. And these are the recommended conditions, which basically calls out in 1A, the existing 554 units at 18.43 units per acre, based on the site plan received on November 25th, 2020. And then lastly, if the subject site is redeveloped in the future, it shall be developed with the T5 zoning standards. And in regards to the concurrent variance, these are the conditions that would be approved with it, to allow the existing tennis courts and fencing, as well as the swimming pools and fencing related to that, to remain as they are on the property. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Any questions for Rob? Go ahead. Paul?
Robert, just to confirm what I heard you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, if there were a loss of any kind, whether it's fire or storm or something of pretty catastrophic event, where there was going to need to be a redevelopment of a significant portion of this, the T5 gives them the right to go back to, but not to exceed what they're currently at today for redevelopment? Is that a correct statement?
Well, what they would do is, so if it was only a building or two that was destroyed, it would remain AL, but they would be able, under that zoning designation, just to rebuild those few buildings.
Like what they have today.
As they are today. And what the proposed condition states, that let's say if some other entity buys the property, just bulldozes everything, then yes, correct. It would have to come under the T5 density that is allowed for that district, I guess.
And is that density 18.34 units?
No. Well, no, it's not. It, I need to go look to see what the T5 limited, I believe it would be nine units per acre without TDRs.
Okay.
Do we have any public comment?
We do, we have one in support of.
Okay. I'll go ahead and allow the public comment, and then we'll get back to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Carl Westmore, and my address is 3343 Peachtree Road. Ms. McDonald did her usual, very thorough explanation of the case, and I don't want to waste any more of your time, except to emphasize that, as she said, nothing else can be built there. This is simply to allow the existing improvements that have been there for 20 years to stay in place. If it's redeveloped, they've got to play by your new rules. This is... This is the same situation we went through, another one on Deerfield Parkway, five years ago. And as she said, the conditions make all of that clear. And so anybody that buys it knows what they're dealing with. Be happy to discuss it further or answer questions, but I think this is fairly straightforward.
Okay. So is that our only, thank you, Mr. Westmoreland, and if there are some questions, I may ask you to come back?
And I think we have a client representative virtually as well, if you have questions for them.
Okay, all right. So is there any more public comment that we know of, virtual or?
I don't have any here.
Okay, all right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Still open to any questions for staff or the applicant. So is there any more questions or comments? Joe?
So Robin, all we're doing is we're taking a piece of property that is legal nonconforming, we're creating a legal and conforming state for the property, and we're overlaying or making sure that we've got rules in place, that if they were to redevelop the property, they've got to adhere by the new rules that govern T5.
Correct, very good.
All right. There you go.
Make a motion?
Yeah. So is there any more questions or comments? If not, I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the request to conformity to AL, Agenda Item Number 21-047.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Cookley, with a second from Councilmember Moore.
Yeah.
Your discussion?
I'd like to add all the conditions.
Yeah. Thank you.
And so, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt.
Isn't that a given, though?
They were, but if you want to.
It's a given, okay.
Well, let me just say this, and Ken, leave me, if, the assumption, I think, from Councilmember Cookley is her approval, her motion was based on the listed recommendations by staff. So, and I think council wants to make sure that that's.
Way I understood it as well.
So for the record, that's the intention there.
Right. Do you want me to sort of?
Ken, do we, I think we're good. I think we're good. So I have a motion from Councilmember Cookley, and was it, who did I have a second from Councilmember Moore, for approval of this item with the, to be clear, that it includes all the recommendations by staff in this presentation. So, and any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
The next item, Mayor, under this zoning agenda is council's consideration of RZ 21-047 amendments to Section 64-1 definitions, as it relates to modified driveways and large lot incentives. It's Agenda Item Number 21048, Ms. Robin McDonald.
Okay, we have before you tonight, a text amendment that disappeared, but there it is again. So we're bringing this definition amendment that involves, first of all, the zoning ordinance 64-1 definitions. And this is a key component for our large lot incentives, that I know there's a lot of discussions about in CPAC, and it's near and dear to everybody's heart. So just for a little history, on June 18, 2018, you all, Mayor and City Council, approved some text amendments to both the zoning and the subdivision ordinances, to allow incentives for the development of large lots, i.e. three acres or more. When applying for a large lot subdivision, it is defined as a minor plat, and therefore not required to go through a preliminary plat process. And back in 2018, we made, or you all, approved our suggestion of, the number of lots should not exceed five lots to be able to use this large lot incentive. And part of that was that it could access a street via what we called a modified single-family residential driveway to five lots. So basically, a cross easement to be able to be used to access up to five lots. So today, tonight, staff proposes that we change that to an unlimited number of large lots would be considered a minor plat. So since we've had a couple of years, three years or so, to live with it, with the five lots, we want to be able to expand that, because I think we've had two subdivisions. Here's one that's been done, a four-lot subdivision off of Sweet Apple near Ebenezer Road. Ebenezer comes down here, and this is Sweet Apple here, which is a gravel road. And you can see there's four lots, one, two, three, four. And here is the shared modified residential driveway, okay? So this allowed there to be less infrastructure. Each lot provides its own stormwater and meeting the regulations that the state mandates, as well as not a need to do a full-blown street with curb and gutter, lights, et cetera. So that's one example that has been approved, and it's under construction. This is a second one. It is off of Hickory Flat, near the county border. And here we have four lots. Of these, all of them are minimum three acre, and these three lots are accessed through a shared modified driveway. This fourth parcel comes off of the adjacent Hickory, I can't remember the subdivision, but it's off of Hickory Flat, but it's another phase that will be developed in normal lots. But this allowed these three beautiful pieces of property to be developed in large lots with the modified driveway. So specifically, in the definitions, this is what we're asking you all to modify in red. So right now, it states, this private drive means a paved or unpaved area used for ingress or egress of vehicles, which allows access from a street to a building, other structure, facility, and may provide access to any number of single-family residential lots, provided that the accessed lots are each a minimum of three acres in size. So with this modification or change, we go from a maximum of five lots to unlimited lots, to give more flexibility for larger landowners who want to do more lots that are minimum three acres. And with that said, this is part of, the next item is a text amendment to the subdivision regulations, and I'll talk about it, but they work integral, it's integral with one another. They're pieces of a puzzle that need to come together for this large lot incentive to work. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Laura?
So I had a question from a citizen. And I think the missing piece for people that haven't been following this and our discussions on it for a couple of years now, if it's not going to be a large lot subdivision, which is what we're working so hard, when developers do come in and they want to develop a parcel, what are we seeing that it is? It's the smaller acreage, you know, one per acre?
I mean, I think it's, this allows for more creativity for the even larger lots. So if you have 20 acres, or 30 acres, you could do 10 three-acre lots, instead of being, and it just gives you more flexibility, so. But the alternative would be true, it would be one-acre lots. But also, the benefit of expanding the number of lots is that it still would be considered a minor plat, which a minor plat does not require it to go to Planning Commission for review, and it's an administrative process amongst staff, and then ultimately, it goes before you all as an item on the consent agenda. So again, it's just a way to incentivize developers to see less time, less money, but at the same time, ensuring that we are applying the applicable life safety issues. The Fire Marshal's reviewed this, he's comfortable with it, we've worked in tandem with him as well.
Paul?
Robin, if I heard you correctly, this can be either gravel road or hard surface.
Correct, it's a driveway.
And in doing so, some of the infrastructure requirements that would be required on a traditional subdivision hard surface, like curb and gutter, can potentially be removed as one of the incentives for development like this, correct?
Correct.
Did I also hear you say, or was it implied, that some of the things that also would be required in a subdivision development, like a dedicated group, water retention for, like a retention hut, goes away, because that's all mitigated on a per-lot basis, because they're all three acres or more, correct?
Correct.
So these are all consistent with the things that we've been talking about it for a long time, in terms of encouraging that rural look and feel to give the developers some true incentives to large lot development?
Correct, yep.
Thank you for the confirmation.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, I think, you know, this, in my opinion, is something we've all been working towards, and, you know, obviously, the benefit, the larger we allow this to happen, as far as number of homes and acreage, you know, benefits even more. If it's, you know, when we had it down to, you know, small amount of acreage, five lots, it benefited, you know, 15 acres or so from the citizen's side, but gosh, now, you know, somebody wants to do 100 homes and it's on over 300 acres, that certainly just helps keep the density down of what could happen with, you know, if it was standard one-acre subdivision. So I certainly think it's in the right direction, but anybody else?
Oh, and to your point, Joe, anything we can do, should I move the mic closer? Okay, I'm going to do that. Anything we can do to increase the average amount of acreage per lot is going to be a good thing for us in the long run. So to your point, Joe, any incentives we can provide, and this is certainly one of them, we should.
Rick?
And Robin, you had said that, taken into this, is the Fire Department and Public Safety would still be looking to make sure that they have access, be able to take care, because I know that was part of the discussion, we started down this road, is how are they going to be able to get in there in the case of a fire? But that would be included in the way this is designed.
And the Fire Marshal reviews all of our plats, to make sure everything is consistent with what the needs of the Fire Department is for access, as well as, they're going to have to, you know, many times, they'll have to put an additional fire hydrant in, like within the development, just like a normal subdivision. It's not like they don't have to put fire hydrants anymore, because our hose lays only a certain amount. So obviously, it's going to meet the life and safety requirements.
Okay, anybody else? So clarify for me, Robin, so we need to vote on this item?
Right, so this is in the zoning.
And then we'll go on to the next one, even though they're tied.
Yeah, and then the next one is, so if you can make a vote on this, Section RZ 21-02 text amendment, and then we'll go on to the next one.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I'll open up for a motion.
Ms. Mayor? Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Mayor, I make motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 21-047.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Moore.
It's actually 048.
It's 048.
Oh, it's, okay, so, I'm sorry, yep, we already did that, I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that. I'll make a motion that we approve.
Hold on one second, Rick, if you don't mind. Ken, do you have a?
Well, I just.
Is there a question, maybe we should?
The only question I'm having is whether you all are anticipating on your agenda voting on this under unfinished business, but it looks like it's a separate.
It's zoning for the zoning, text amendment. It's zoning, under the zoning procedures rules.
All right.
Because it's under.
Okay, let me jump in too. Let me ask, I assume, I think I already asked, but do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, I'll close the hearing, and now I'll open up for a motion.
Yeah, I'll rephrase that. Ms. Mayor, I make motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 21-048.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Moore, with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, let's make sure I've got. All right, so we'll move on to unfinished business, and the city clerk will please read that out.
That item is consideration of text amendment to check code subdivisions as or relate to modified driveways incentives. Agenda Item Number 21049, Ms. Robin McDonald.
Good evening again. So this is the second part. Again, as stated, this is in the subdivision regulations outside of the ordinance, and these series of changes are in tandem with the previous text amendment, to incentivize the large lot development. So I'm just going to step through the various ones and explain it. You all have the full packet with the entire Chapter 50, but it just makes it easier just to call out each item that we're recommending for a change. So this is very similar, or it is almost the same, as the previous text amendment and the zoning ordinance. We're asking to amend the definition of driveway modified single-family residential access or shared private drive. And so it calls out in the red, and may provide access to any number of single-family residential lots, provided that the accessed lots are each a minimum of three acres in size. So this is a duplication of what's within the zoning definitions. So that's the first item on page two of the entire packet. Again, on page two is a definition of a minor plat. It means a finished drawing of a subdivision of no more than three lots, or if any number of single-family residential lots are each a minimum of three acres or more in size, that at the time of subdivision, does not necessarily, but may involve a land disturbance permit, new streets, extension of a utility or municipal facility, and depicts all legal and engineering information required by this chapter. So this is the definition of what a minor plat is. And so we're just changing it from being five lots to unlimited, so long as they're minimum of three acres in size. So the next change is a definition of subdivision minor, which, don't we just say that? Well, this is just the definition of a subdivision minor, not a plat. Means a subdivision of no more than three lots, or if any number of single-family residential lots provided, each lots provided are each a minimum of three acres or more in size, that may, at the time of subdivision, does not necessarily, but may involve, et cetera, et cetera. On page 15, this is just a change, it's not a definition anymore, we're getting into the guts of what a subdivision, how it's laid out, and this was actually just a catch from the previous version, and if you just look down, it's calling out, when such access is provided, the minor plat shall clearly indicate the necessary access easements. The access easements shall be privately maintained. So it just speaks about minor plat, so we just wanted to make that change, or that clarification. The next item is on page 28, so this speaks to the detention retention design, saying, when serving more than three lots, except when all the single-family residential lots are each a minimum of three acres in size, and it just continues on to describe what the detention ponds are required to do. So I won't bore you with reading it out loud. And with that, those are all the different changes within Chapter 50, the subdivision regulations, that are required to begin to implement this unlimited number of three-acre lot subdivisions. So with that, I'm open to any questions you might have.
Okay, questions or comments for Robin?
Robin, can you just go back one click on the slide, I just want to read that one more time. I thought I understood it. Where it's saying that, except when they're all three acres in size.
Correct.
Detention ponds, retention ponds, and water facility.
It's an exception to the rule.
Shall be located on a separate parcel. So that implies that it's not necessarily on the individual parcels. It still would be a separate, the water retention would be on a separate parcel?
No, what we're trying to say is, and I believe we're saying it is, it speaks to when serving more than three lots, except when all the single-family residential lots are each a minimum of three acres in size. are each a minimum of three acres in size. So that's the exception. So then you don't have to read the rest of it.
All right. I got it. That's, that's the way I had hoped it would read, but I wasn't sure I read it that way. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, I'll close, close the hearing on that. Not sure I have to do that, but I'll open up a motion on that.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 21-049.
Second?
Yeah, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Jamison with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. So we'll move on to new business. Our first item we moved prior, so we'll move on to our second item. The city clerk, please call that out.
Is the consideration of an amended emergency of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, under section 3.18 of the charter of the city of Milton, Georgia, to provide the operation of the city of Milton, Georgia during the public emergency known as the novel coronavirus disease, 2019 global pandemic, to become effective upon adoption by the council to supersede the existing emergency ordinance and for other purposes. City Attorney, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mayor, members of the council, you don't need me to really go over this at this stage. This is not an emergency ordinance, and we have been habitually reenacting it, which we think is appropriate, and we think that is what responsible government should do. But I think you know the terms. The terms have not changed since last time. The only thing that's changing is, in fact, the duration. This one would take effect on March 9th of 2021, expire at midnight on April 8th of 2021. Again, trying our best to just anticipate what the governor is going to continue to do, and we'll try to act accordingly. The only thing this one does add that we actually saw at our last emergency ordinance as well, which this talks about, when we have subsidiary entities that may have some difficulty assembling a quorum about how we're going to resolve, whether those are going to be live or in-person meetings. But again, you've already seen that language. I'm not even sure we've had to use it in the last 30 days, but at least it's there. Mr. Mayor, there's no more presentation on this one.
Okay. Do you have any questions on this? I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 21-063.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to reports. Does anyone on the council have any, anything they want to report on? Okay, well, we'll move to staff, starting with Robert.
Good evening again. Got a lot to report on, and I'll try to move as quickly as I can. As you know, we continue to have construction going on the Hopewell-Hamby and the Hopewell-Thompson roundabouts. As a matter of fact, communications put a post out today, I understand, on the, some wonderful aerial photographs for the Hopewell-Thompson roundabouts. So you'll be seeing more of those. The Cogburn Road sidewalks, as I've indicated before, we've had some, some problems with conflict with underground utilities. So we're having to do a little redesign, modify the design somewhat, modify the stormwater so that we can accommodate the utilities. The alternative is to relocate the utilities. Of course, that'll take a huge delay and cost the city some money, so we're going to try to redesign around them. The bridge culvert at Saddle Springs is moving along quite well. They should be through by mid-March, so we can move on from that project. I want to report to you that we have submitted our annual stormwater report to the state. Our city engineer, Ken Kaye, did a fantastic job putting one together with a lot of help from a lot of different staff in comm dev, communications, and other departments. The report itself was 63 pages long, and we had, if I counted correctly, it had 278 attachments. And that's just the annual report. So we did our, our commitment to the state. And I'll leave it at that. The emergency flashing beacon is under construction out there, Highway 9, in front of the new public safety complex. You've probably seen some construction going on out there. They poured the foundations. We should see those mast arms come in maybe as early as this week. And we continue to do public input survey for the Big Creek-Greenway Connector Project. That survey will continue through March 5th. We're getting a lot of favorable responses because it's federal money involved in this. One of the requirements is to get public input on the support of the project, so we're doing that. We have received bids for the next road resurfacing project, hopefully be on the council's agenda in the next meeting. We've also received proposals for the Country Club, former Milton Country Club hydrology study. We're evaluating those proposals and we'll score those accordingly. We are also seeking bids for electrical work here at City Hall so we can hook up a portable generator. Should we lose power at City Hall, we'll be able to hook up the portable generator. We're receiving bids on those electrical work now. We also received bids for the demolition of Station 42. We've kind of taken the lead on the demolition, demolition of that station. We got bids in, that should be at your next council meeting as well. For the month of March, we will have bids out for the Country Club Trail. Project will be out on the streets. We'll have bids out for the construction of the Hopewell-Bethany Roundabout. And we hope to have bids out as well for the Providence Park Trail. So very active month of March. Any questions?
Any questions for Robert?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Fire. Our new chief's first report here.
That's right.
Some slack on the first one.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. We're with Musafire Chief. I have just a quick presentation for you. Just a quick update. Things I'll touch on is the call volume from last year and then the trends for this year. The COVID-19 vaccine community support program success, and then Station 42 construction progress report, which Bob has already touched on. So for 2020, we ran short of 3,000 calls. That pie chart shows the breakdown for some of the call. Obviously EMS continues to be the majority of our calls and good intent calls, which is sort of like a bucket that includes hazardous materials, spills, canceled in route, fire alarms, and all of those. For 2021, we're seeing year-to-date an increase of 7% in the call volume compared to 2020. The COVID vaccine community support program is a huge success. We've had about 81 emails and 25 calls. That's what, we've responded to every one single email. We provided guidance to our, our community. 25 calls, and we added some resources. So and we continue to serve the community in that capacity, trying to find multiple facilities and ways to, we can help schedule our community for vaccines and find availability. We added a new resource, the CDC just introduced vaccinefinder.org, which you can enter your information, the zip code, and you're able to see vaccine availability. It actually shows you real time where those locations are. So, and we've actually helped citizens from other cities. They called us, they saw the article, and they were calling from Alpharetta, from Roswell, as far as Sandy Springs. You know, we provided the information. Fire Station 42 update, it's progressing as scheduled. I'd like to thank Bob for his leadership. He kind of, he kind of filled me in and helped me, kind of guided me through this process. So thank you, Bob. This rendition of what the sign will look like outside the station, once we complete the demolition, we'll erect the signs so it shows what the rendition of Station 42 will be. We currently have signs in place that says that the station is closed and that we've relocated the firefighters. And that completes my report. If you have any questions? Yes, sir?
Good.
Quick question. Has there been a change in the state on the order of COVID vaccines? Did they open it up now to?
I think they're getting ready to move to phase two.
Anyone?
Yes.
1/8 plus.
I'm sorry?
Pardon me?
It's 1/8 plus now.
Yes, 1/8 plus.
Some people.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You gave a hope, your first, hope everything's going well for you so far.
It's going well. I feel fortunate to serve this community. It's a great community. I love it. It was, it was a good decision, and I'm, I'm glad I made that decision to come here. So thank you very much.
Good. We're glad you're here.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Economic development. Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just a few things to update on. First, thank you for coming to the first ribbon cutting over at Market District this morning. That was exciting to open up the new Starbucks. And we look forward to the Billy Allen's restaurant opening up, probably late spring. And that's the whole second floor of the second building. We are moving forward with the breweries and distilleries that we spoke about last month, with it going to CZIM in March, planning commission in April, and hopefully the first presentation to council in June. And then lastly, if you are up at 8:15 on Friday morning, I will be the speaker for the Council for Quality Growth, North Holden Advisory Council. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sarah.
Want to give us a preview of what you're going to say in case we can't read that?
I'm not ready yet.
Just do an invocation. You do those very well.
All right. Greg, communications?
Always the last one. And unfortunately, everyone who's been in meetings with me, I always have way too much to say because every single department kind of touches on mine somehow. So first off, I would just kind of, this has been a year, as we know, since the pandemic. So just start with this, just some social media stuff, that our Facebook followers have risen 30% since we have about 13,000 people who kind of get their news from us, which is, 30% is a pretty good chunk of change. We've also had over 968,000 Twitter impressions since that time too. So which is a good reach, for sure. Another thing we have, we once had a basically a dormant YouTube channel, but now we have a pretty vibrant one, thanks to our communications coordinator, Jen Hartwig. We have over a few, over a dozen videos, and we're adding more and more, and there are many purposes. And that's part of the things, that the way people are getting the information, videos are kind of more dynamic, kind of engaging way. So we wanted to increase that in different ways, whether it's for comprehensive plan, whether it's for Nisanta, whether, whatever it is. And in addition, but generally, in terms of social media strategies, we don't just post, we engage. So you saw that, if people saw our strategic plan and comprehensive plan posts, we didn't just, in addition, just telling, here's a meeting. We wanted to ask them questions. We wanted people to participate in this and share ideas. And we had dozens and dozens of comments from there. We also had, more recently, we had Black History Month posts. We profiled some people. We shared some history. People loved that. We're going to have Women's History Month stuff as well this month. And even just celebrating holidays, whether it's for Christmas, Hanukkah, Diwali, Chinese New Year's. People really enjoy being able to see their communities reflected on there. And I think it just builds a strength of bonding with, with everyone. Another thing that Facebook does is that actually a Facebook comment led to the COVID vaccine initiative that the fire chief just talked about. I was, someone, someone, a 70-year-old said, I can't get my, there was a vaccine posted, said, I can't get my vaccine. At the direction of our city manager, we, Matt Marriott, I hashed out some ideas, and that's a good example, kind of thought up the ideas. And I've helped, certainly, but fire has been on the front lines, and they've kind of taken that from here. So in addition, we have our, I don't know how many people have used our special vaccine page, again, just kind of going above and beyond. Even if we're not administering vaccines, we can at least, you know, share the information that we have and use social media for that as well. Another thing too is, we are, we're kind of central to transparency and information. The next few weeks, you'll see, hopefully, like the beginning of a project web portal, which is where we can share information on different projects that we have going around the city. So in terms of timelines, details, pictures, financial information. So for Public Works, it might be one of our many roundabouts. For fire, it might be Fire Station 42, for Parks and Rec, Providence Park details. And that's really a total team effort. That's communications, but mostly, you know, mostly finance, all the different departments. We're also previewing all, previewing all city meetings. And soon, I'm not sure if you remember, Laserfish, which is a way for people to search public documents. We're going to find, place, find a home for that on the website. In addition, I won't go too deeply, because you know all about it, but the comprehensive plan are very integrally involved in that. And also, the strategic plan, very much involved in that as well. And last but not least, I just want to mention, again, everything we do is about teamwork. So police, we're going to preview the, do something on the chief's advisory board. Public Works, Robert mentioned the different projects that we're doing. We're showcasing those. Parks and Rec, it's constant, like every few days. Finance, we're going to produce two annual reports for them this month. So there's a lot of stuff involved, but the only reason we are successful and we're able to get the board out is when we work together with all of our departments. And it's fun to do, so. So thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Greg?
I have a comment. So Greg, what's today?
Today is Horse Protection Day. We've got something on that.
Annual National Day of Horse.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
So thank you for that. I appreciate that shout out. And then also, just because you are the communicator of everything.
Yes.
And community development is in here. I just, I'm, you know, there's a lot of activity in the city. Some really large parcels are starting to, you know, be developed. And, and some of them, most of them are by right development. So we still have, you know, the notification that goes out, just so the community knows what's happening. So I just want to really encourage us to get ahead of those notification signs so that neighbors know about the, the transition of a parcel.
I would, yeah, that's a great idea. When we talked about having, having like basically a map into some, like kind of an extension of our project page, those are private projects. But still, we're involved in the process, and we can keep people informed.
Yeah, just like what we're doing to, to show people this, the picture of the new fire station, the sign, you know, because there's all kinds of chatter, you know, this, this parcel is sold to this developer, that one. And a lot of times, you know, if there's this, you know, there, there needs, the sign does go up. We, we made that part of our just notification process to the community.
Sure.
But also, you might get more interest now. We have a lot of new residents here that may not understand, you know, what a by right development is, or if we have great news that maybe it could be a large lot subdivision, you know, something like that.
And actually, with the strategic, one of our strategic plan community forums, someone had that idea. Anyway, I thought it was a great idea. So if Bob's on board, I'm on board. So it may not be overnight, but soon enough.
Because that way, we won't, we'll say, you know, we're ahead of that. Here's the information.
Well, yeah, just answer questions before, before people ask them. That's the, the goal too, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, Paul?
Yeah, just a quick, couple of comments, Joe. I'm glad that they went first. If I may take a moment, go back and just provide an update on something I was thinking about.
Sure.
As to comment, first on Greg's report, it's clearly working, Greg. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. From before, being on council, and now being on council, the proactive communication that you're putting out there is really making it great for us, or for me in particular. Because the questions that I get from the community are now in a very different place because they're dealing with factual information rather than misinformation in many cases. So I would, number one, applaud that. Number two, the proactive communication that we're putting out there about some of the events that are taking place, CPAC or strategic planning, the participation levels in a virtual environment, many cases, we have to meet with CPAC. I'm delighted to see some of the attendance that we're getting because of the proactive communication you're putting out there. So it's, it's working, and I can't thank you enough for that. And then second, I would just applaud the efforts of Sarah and Bob in particular. I know it's a big staff effort when you guys are doing some of the things every day that you're, that generate a long-term approach. We don't get a chance to celebrate you guys as often as we might. I took great pleasure this morning in attending the grand opening of the Starbucks. Bob, the look and feel of this environment that's being created here is a great deal of your vision, and I just think it's tremendous. You put that hand in glove with what Sarah's doing, with the energy that you're generating. Sarah, the buzz this morning of the attendees. Now, I recognize it's a, you know, it's a, it's a controlled environment with people who have the same vision and mission who are there. But the kinds of things that they were talking about that are coming here to downtown Crab Apple or to Milton, we're, we're kind of the, what's going on. And it's because of the hard work that you guys are putting in. Just can't thank you guys enough for the pride that I can take in what we're calling Milton because of your hard work that's generating this tremendous outcome. So thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, everybody. I will now open up for a motion to move into executive session as added on our agenda for land acquisition, potential litigation, and personnel.
I'll move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to move into executive discuss, session as discussed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.